Okay, it is the twenty-second of September and this is the Township Board Meeting at seven P M. So we'll convene the regular meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or deletions?
Um, I believe I need to request that uh make a motion to remove uh, I think it's item two on the check register for the consent agenda.
You can do that at the consent agenda, but I don't see why we couldn't do it now.
Um, whichever is appropriate.
So any member of this board can request something to be removed from the consent agenda to the uh action items. So it doesn't have to be an addition or deletion to the.
Okay.
So, okay, any other addition deletions?
So is she making that motion now or no?
It's not a motion. So she just has to say, I want this removed from the consent agenda and put on the.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so, okay, um, then I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as read.
Um, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? Okay. And we'll start out with a presentation from Yo and Yo, who will present our audit results with Jamie Rivette.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Jamie Rivette. I'm an audit partner with Yo and Yo CPAs. And tonight I'm going to go over the highlights from your March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five audit. You should all have a copy in front of you. Um, first, I just want to start off by talking about really what you're looking for from us, and that is an opinion on those financial statements. So um Department of Treasury requires every municipality to have an independent audit performed annually. And management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Then as your auditors, my team and I come in, we audit that information presented, and then we issue you an opinion on it. And the township was issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It means there's no material modifications that need to be made to the financial statements. So I have a couple of graphs in here that we'll go over. First one is your general fund, and this is of your general fund revenue and transfers in. Can't fit it all. Let me see if I can reduce the size here.
You probably said it, but this is for our last fiscal year, right?
Yes.
The complete year.
For April twenty-two, April first, twenty-twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So on the graph that you have um for your general fund revenue and transfers in, the general fund received about eight-point-one million in revenue during the year. And you can see on here that the majority of that is coming from your tax dollars. So about sixty percent is coming from taxes with another fifteen percent coming from the state in the form of your state shared revenue. So the total of those, about seventy-five percent then is coming from state and um property taxes, which really is dependent on a stable economy. The next graph I have then, we've charted your total revenue for your general fund for the past five years. And just to give you a quick picture there, so you can see we've been a steady incline over the past few years. Um, we did have about a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase um from twenty-four to twenty-five. And the majority of that was related to some transfers in from other funds. Um, we did also have an increase in property tax revenue this year, too. And then um your general fund expenditures and transfers out. So if you're thinking of um every dollar that's going out of general fund, about fifty-seven cents of that is related to public safety. So your total general fund expenditures and transfers out is about seven-point-seven million. And fifty-seven percent of that is related to public safety, which obviously the majority of that is for your police services that you have, which is about four-point-three million dollars. Um, and then the other larger section that you see on this pie chart here is general government. So the state of Michigan tells us um which categories we have to um group together under general government. And there's about fifteen different departments that we have, and those range from building and grounds, professional services, township board, and supervisor. And all of this information is in the audited financial statements if you wanted to see exactly where um, you know, the dollar amount is coming from. And again, we put together the same bar chart um for the last five years of those expenditures and, you know, very similar to your revenue as those are are, you know, steadily increasing to year over year. So we did have about a five-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar increase in our expenditures compared to last year. Um, we had some increased professional fees this year for the due diligence costs related to the toll bridge um as well as an increase in some community development expenditures, too. Um, I also added a slide for your proprietary fund. So you do have three funds that are um treated more like a business. So they have charges for services in there, and then we have operating expenses. So those are your Department of Public Works, your municipal airport and commerce park, and then also the Toll Bridge Fund is a new fund for you. Um, so we do show here what the operating revenue and operating expenses are. Um, and then you can see in the middle there, we have some non-operating revenue, so things that are outside the normal operations of running, running that fund. Um, so when there's grants, that's included in here, and then when we have some related bond costs as well. So your Department of Public Works, the change in net position was about five-hundred-and-six-thousand. The municipal airport and commerce park actually had a decrease in their net position of about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And then the Toll Bridge um had a negative one-point-one million. Um, and then I've also have a slide for your pension and retiree healthcare contributions. So those are the legacy costs where we have the net pension liability and the, the um the net O P E B also liability recorded. And here you can see what the contributions have been for each of those um for the past five years as well. So the pension contributions this year were almost one-point-nine million with the retiree healthcare contributions a little over eight-hundred thousand. And in addition to auditing the financial statements, Teresa gets us to have us bug her even more because she, the township has spent more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in federal expenditures, so we actually have to do another layer of auditing on your federal grants. So we had to do a single audit this year as well. Um, and during that, um, there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the federal grants. We did have one item um that was a prior period adjustment, so that means there was something discovered by Teresa this year um that should have been recorded in previous years. And that was related to the township's um employees, the four-fifty-seven fund. So there was a new standard a few years ago that had us go through. Um, there's this flow chart where you have to go through and answer all these questions to determine what kind of fund it is and how it should be recorded on your financial statement. So um Teresa was doing some of her homework and gave us a call, and, you know, we talked it through and we're like, yes, you are correct. That should have been on there as a fiduciary fund. So we did add that on there this year. Um, and then we also did not have any matters for management's consideration. So while we're doing the audit, we're always looking for ways to improve efficiencies or tighten internal controls. Um, and we did not identify anything that needed to be reported um to governance either. Um, and before I go into questions, I do want to point out just a couple of things. Number one, um, we actually dated the audit was uh August seventh. So I can tell you in the probably five years I've been um involved with the township's audit, we are struggling to get it submitted by September thirtieth. So a great job by Teresa and her team on having everything ready for us, even with that toll bridge, you know, this year. It's not very often that, you know, I have a municipality that purchases a toll bridge. So we had to do some, some research, and we had a lot of communication on it. But to have everything done and completed by, you know, her end and our end by August, you know, early August is, is really amazing. So I just wanted to point that out. But are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Was there any penalty to that um, the missed item?
No, no penalty. It's just a reporting item. So everything, um, all of the payments, everything was being accounted for properly on your system. It was just never recorded as a fund on the audit report. Yes, good question. Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Anything else?
So this is a pretty high-level report. It's pretty skinny.
Yes.
So if we ever wanted to drill down on it, what are, what other types of reports would we look at? Would we go to Teresa and you would have the backup on all of them?
Yes.
Because I mean, it's so high level, right, that?
Yeah, there's, so this um is your audited financial statement. It's pretty thick. It's probably a hundred and some pages. Um, and then the single audit has the federal piece of it here. Um, these are public documents. They get uploaded to Department of Treasury, and they'll be available. I mean, anybody could go and look at them. But Teresa does have, have the copies if there's anything you want to look at, and, you know, if you have a question, you can always reach out to me, too.
Yeah, I, I would normally like to skim through those, so I don't know if we have any extra copies or it just gets me more grounded in everything and.
So I'd have to go back and look at the email, but I did forward to the board electronic copies and put hard copies in your mailboxes in August.
In August?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. I'll go back and look for those. And thank you for finding that error.
Yes.
It was not, I was glad until they told me, well, you know, it's a finding.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter. They're always going to find something. If they don't find something, they're not digging deep enough.
We're not looking now. Yes.
Right. And the, the point of inspections is compliance, right?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so we appreciate both of you.
Yep, thank you.
If I'm understanding you correctly, you're basically saying that if we go through this, we get a broad view of the thing. We have a question. We want to drill down a little bit. The bulk of our question should be answered in those two documents you presented.
Yes.
And then we can always ask if it isn't.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jamie. Appreciate you.
No, I'm not quite done. Hold on. Yeah, I was just waiting for everybody else to finish. Um, so I, I guess I have a question on what the difference would be. I, I understand what you're doing and what you said, but as far as what you have done and maybe say a, an entry audit or type of forensic audit, what would be done differently? What else would you be have done or what have been looking for?
Oh, sure. Yes. So when we do a financial statement audit, we have certain, there are audit standards that we have to follow. So we do the same standards at every entity that we audit. And then when we're auditing the financial statements, we look at the entity as a whole and we discuss where and plan for where we think there's going to be the potential for material misstatement. And then we identify that as a risk, and then we tailor our tests around those risks. So those are different at every entity depending on what they have going on, right? So here we knew the toll bridge was something unique. We knew we were going to have to spend some additional time. We always have management override of controls as um a risk, too, because we do not want Teresa to get comfortable. If she knew I was always going to check her credit card statements, right, for the township and making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, that file would be perfect. So every year we're mixing it up. We have to remain skeptical as your independent auditor. Now, if I was doing a forensic examination, those are because there is a concern somewhere. And then we just, our eyes are focused only on that area, not the whole entity, not internal controls, not everything that's related to running a township. So let's say, for example, let's use credit cards. Let's say somebody on the board was like, ah, I'm just not sure if the credit cards are, you know, the information coming in, the support is correct. So we would say, give me all of the credit card receipts for the whole year or whatever timeframe it is, and we would only look at those credit cards.
So we would have to provide you with something that we think may be suspect?
Yes, to do a, a forensic examination. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think um that was a good question, Mark, or comment. And what he's talking about is if there's a change in leadership on the board, which we're a new board and whether we would need to do a forensic audit to just audit everything done in the past to see if we could find anything that was done wrong that needs correcting or all the way to policies and procedures and everything like that. So I don't know if you've ever done anything like that or?
Uh, me personally, no. And I would say most of the entities, so I specialize in governments and schools because they all follow the same set of standards, G A S B's. Um, and they have turnover all the time. I sit on a local school board, too. We, we have board members turning over, too. Um, so we're always relying on the prior auditor, right, and what did they do? And what, what did the um, you know, were their findings, were there discrepancies if there were? Did they put change in place to try to improve? Like you said, nobody's perfect. Everybody makes mistakes. But are you trying to put, you know, steps in place to correct those and improve? Um, but usually when there's a turnover like that, um, you know, we don't go back and redo unless there's a specific area. Because like I said, we do a very high-level thorough. Um, and I know Teresa has went through it with a fine-tooth comb to make sure our, our information's matching hers, you know, and um to make sure that it's all, it all matches up, and there's nothing slipping through the cracks there. So if you had a specific concern, then I would say you would do that. I'm not sure what, you know, that would, to me, would be a really big job because I don't know what they're going to comb through, you know, like, I, I don't know. It would depend on what, what management felt was of a concern.
And I'm an employee benefits attorney, and so over my career before, when I was still in administration, um, when auditors would come in, we would be like, oh, because they would ask for everything, right? Copies of this, copies of that. You never knew what they were going to ask for. So I assume it's the same. You're pulling all these different records and seeing what gets your attention.
We do, we do.
She's laughing, so I know you called her quite a bit.
We, oh, we sit down there for like a week and a half, but um
Right.
You know, and we have the laptop, too, so they can look up what we want to look up. We do a lot of analytics. So if we think, okay, property taxes, you know, we know that property tax values increased three percent. How come revenue didn't increase three percent? You know, so we have a lot of um ideas, expectations of where things should be for the year. And then when it's not, then we go and ask and like ask for information and keep pulling until we feel comfortable. Um, because there's a lot of auditor judgment, too. Do we feel comfortable with that? Is that a good explanation? Does that make sense?
So if there's uh something that is really going to make a difference in the financials or, you know, a large dollar amount, I would expect you to find that. If there's something that's minor that won't really matter that much, it may or may not get caught.
Right. We have materiality thresholds. If not, we would live here, right? We would be living here auditing every single day, you know, and I know Teresa wouldn't want that, and we don't have time for that. So we do, you know, we do look at materiality, and then we, you know, hone in on certain areas and, you know, focus on that. Like there was a new standard this year, G A S B one-on-one compensated absences. So we spent time going through that, making sure on the implementation year we have it correct, you know, so we don't have to go back and do a prior period adjustment.
Okay, and how long have you been the auditor?
Um, on this job, I want to say maybe like as a partner, um, so you had a different partner. He retired from Yo and Yo, and then I kind of slipped in a couple of years with him, and then when he left, I just, I took over. I was in the background doing concurring reviews on the job for a while, but this might be my, maybe fourth year, fifth year, maybe? Not, not long.
Because when you have a change in staff, you may catch something that the prior person didn't.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And we rotate. Um, internally, we have a process, too. If I'm the partner, we rotate who does concurring review. They look at high-risk areas, and then it's the financial statements as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Anybody else?
Sorry, I went over the fifteen minutes.
That's okay. You did great. We appreciate it.
It was worth it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to public comment, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Supervisor Porzarelli is out on a short medical leave, but should be back soon. I was actually in the office this morning, so um. So that'll become action item number three. Expenditure known as nine-twelve-twenty-twenty-five invoice from Wayne County um to the action items, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, so that'll become action item number three. Expenditure known as nine-twelve-twenty-twenty-five invoice from Wayne County for a FOIA request from the Gross Seal Township Treasurer for twenty-five dollars to be paid to the Wayne County Treasurer. Trying to see how fast Brian can type. Okay, he's good. Um, so that particular item is removed from the consent agenda under approval to process and distribute payments through October third, twenty-twenty-five. So Teresa, it's Department two-fifty-three. You're tracking that?
I'm sorry?
So that, that item, uh invoice nine-twelve-twenty-twenty-five under Department two-fifty-three
Right.
is not in the consent agenda now.
Correct, okay.
So are you moving that to an action item?
We are.
Can I ask a quick question before we move forward with it?
Sure.
Unfortunately, my computer's rebooting for whatever reason, but
Government.
We don't have, yeah, exactly. It's government computer. But the uh, the treasurer isn't here. Should he be here to explain?
I mean, he, he certainly could be. We could table it, but we're removing it from the consent agenda, so that's not automatically paid.
So can we, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I think we should have at least the person that had the facts here. So my, my suggestion would be to table it until they're here to explain their position on it.
If we table it, I will bring it up in my trustee report, so it, it will get mentioned tonight regardless.
No, I understand that, but as far as a vote, that's why I'm saying, I mean, I, I, I think that the, because like, I know that if you weren't here or if I wasn't here, whatever the case may be, right? And we have something that we, I don't know, I don't know the story behind. I really don't yet. I guess I'm going to find out.
Somebody bring me up to speed on that. What are we talking about?
This isn't an arguable thing. It's
I'm not arguing. I'm asking if we could table it.
No, you're being considerate.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
Talking about an argument. I'm wanting to know what is the issue that we need to do?
But, no, 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 we can't discuss that yet.
But this, this is also not the time to table it. It ha, it gets moved to action item. Once you get to that action item, then you can discuss that. Thank you.
So it is now an action item, number three. Um, and then otherwise, can I have a motion to the, approve the consent agenda?
Question first before we.
Okay.
So on the consent agenda, it says we're going to approve um Teresa and the Accounts Payable Department to prepare payments and authorize the clerk and treasurer to issue those payments due to an extra week in between the meetings. So normally, it's my understanding that no payments get made unless the board approves them. Is this saying that you guys would go ahead and approve them, and then it would just come back to us, but the payments would already be made?
It, it's authorizing payments that are in here now, listed through October third. So if it's on the um.
That's not correct.
No?
No.
So.
So the check register that's included with your board packet are for all checks that were, were prepared through last Friday, the nineteenth. The third, or now second item on the consent agenda, because there is three weeks between meetings after today, it gives the treasurer and the fin, and the finance director the authority to, to release checks so that we're not, nothing is late.
So it specifically says the treasurer and the clerk?
But because, because of Wayne County's requirement, um, that a business, they don't accept, they actually don't accept uh business or personal checks. They only accept, if you're not going down there and paying cash, they only accept cashier's checks and money orders. We, as a practice, do not do cashier's checks or money orders because then there's no control. So my solution to that was putting it through the check register if and when it's approved.
Are you referring to the uh item known as nine-twelve-twenty-twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I would point out, though, that the, that the um.
So, so, but any, um, any checks can go out between tomorrow and October third.
Okay.
Um, and that's what you're giving us authority to do with the third consent item.
Ones that we haven't seen yet, right?
Correct. You'll still, you'll still see, you'll still see the, you'll still see all the check registers
After the fact, right?
at the next meeting.
And then does the clerk and the treasurer both have to approve it?
It doesn't say clerk or treasurer. It says clerk and treasurer.
But it says to issue payment. So as an attorney, I would read that to say either one of you could do it. It authorizes both of you to be able to cut checks. I don't like that part, to be honest.
Yeah, I would prefer honestly that any checks being issued without the approval of this board require both the clerk and the treasurer.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to ask a question related to this. You were concerned that you had to use a money order or something else?
I think that's relevant to that action item number three, so it doesn't, I don't think it, it's material to what uh trustee Bartlet's comment was a question was.
There was one other payment that was made a few months back, and I found out about it after the fact, and I would have never approved it. And so I just want some tighter controls around this, and especially board-directed payments, right? Because I don't want the board telling you guys or putting you in an awkward position to issue checks, so. But if I had two.
Checks do require two signatures.
But is one Teresa's? Because this?
No. Who's the second one?
Okay, so it would require both.
Okay, in this case, it would require both of us. Yes.
Okay, that's what we were getting at. Yeah.
Okay, so are you good with that?
Well, it depends on how you perform, but I'm going to get, I'm going to trust you, buddy.
I'll keep you in the loop.
I'm going to trust you.
Um, okay, so the consent, consent agenda has been modified to remove the item known as nine-slash-twelve-twenty-twenty-five invoice from Wayne County. Um, otherwise, it stands the same with three consent items, which include minutes from the September eighth board meeting, check registers dated through nineteen September, and approval to process and distribute payments through October third, which only applies to action item three and requires both the treasurer and clerk signature. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, I didn't get a second. I'll need a second first.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, uh, action item number one. Who, which department is that?
Tire the railter.
Okay, uh, administration. So I guess that's me tonight. So I move that the Gross Seal Township Board hereby approves the distribution We, as a practice, do not do cashier's checks or money orders because then there's no control. So my solution to that was putting it through the check register if and when it's approved.
Are you referring to the, uh, item known as nine twelve dash twenty twenty five?
Well, yes.
I, I would point out though, that the, that the, um,
So, so, but any, um, any checks can go out between tomorrow and October third.
Okay.
Um, that's what you're giving us authority to do with the third consent item.
Ones that we haven't seen yet, right?
Correct. You'll still, you'll still see, you'll still see the, you'll still see all the check registers
After the fact, right?
At the next meeting.
And then does the clerk and the treasurer both have to approve it?
It doesn't say clerk or treasurer. It says clerk and treasurer.
But it says to issue payment. So as an attorney, I would read that to say either one of you could do it. It authorizes both of you to be able to cut checks. I don't like that part, to be honest.
Yeah, I would prefer honestly that any checks being issued without the approval of this board require both the clerk and the treasurer.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to ask a question related to this. You were concerned that you had to use a money order or something else?
I think that's relevant to that action item number three, so it doesn't, I don't think it, it's material to what, uh, trustee Bartlett's comment was a question.
There was one other payment that was made a few months back and I found out about it after the fact and I would have never approved it. And so I just want some tighter controls around this and especially board directed payments, right? Because I don't want the board telling you guys or putting you in an awkward position to issue checks, so. But if I had two
Checks do require two signatures.
But is one Teresa's? Cause this?
No. Who's the second one?
Okay, so it would require both.
Okay, in this case, it would require both of us. Yes. Okay.
Okay, that's what we were getting at. Yeah.
Okay, so are you good with that?
Well, it depends on how you perform, but I'm gonna get, I'm gonna trust you, buddy.
I'll keep you in the loop.
I'm gonna trust you.
Um, okay, so the consent, consent agenda has been modified to remove the item known as nine slash twelve twenty twenty five invoice from Wayne County. Um, otherwise, it stands the same with three consent items, which include minutes from the September eighth board meeting, check registers dated through nineteen September, and approval to process and distribute payments through October third, which only applies to action item three and requires both the treasurer and clerk signature. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, I didn't get a second. I'll need a second first.
Second.
Okay. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, uh, action item number one. Who, which department is that?
Tire, the Realtor?
Okay. Uh, administration. So I guess that's me tonight. So I move that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the distribution of the attached RFQ for Realtor Services for marketing and sale of parcel number seven three dash zero one four dash zero two dash zero one eight four dash zero zero eight, commonly known as two zero four four three West River vacant and a home located at parcel number seven three dash zero two seven dash zero three dash zero zero one seven dash zero zero zero, commonly known as two five one four six Dallas Road.
Second.
Okay, so, um, these are both, well, here, I'll just read the history. Uh, you can read the history. It's in front of you, right? So these are treasury sales for failure to pay taxes. Um, uh, and we have first right of refusals for the parcels. We've accepted first right of refusal on both of them and now we're looking for a Realtor to market and sell the properties. Any discussion?
Just said it's a nice opportunity for one of our local Realtors, um, to get the job because they know the property's the best in the market, but it'll be open to everyone, right? Anyone can, uh, bid on it.
Anybody can put in a, uh, a quote, so. It might be a little weird to get somebody from across the state, but I guess they could do it, so.
I'm invested.
Even down river, but.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. No, I already got a second. All right. Now, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Guess I need remedial training, Brian. Um, all right, action item number two is from DPS. I guess with Kevin not here, does anybody want to take this one? Or I can do it?
Go ahead and take it.
Okay, Mark's gonna.
Oh, hold on. Oh, I think I'm good here. Still working my government computer here. Hold on.
You want me to do it?
I like all the documents are sideways on there.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm working on. Hold on, give me one second. Boom, here we go.
Want a hard copy?
He's got it now.
Yep.
Think, I think I'm good. So the recommendation, so this is for the crack and joint seal contract. Recommendations based on the recommendation of the Groseal Township Engineers and Department of Public Services Commission. The Groseal Township Board hereby approves the extension of a contract with Al's asphalt for crack and joint sealing for twenty twenty five construction season.
Second.
Aye.
All right, so the history and purpose, uh, please note the attached memo for the Charles Rains Company. The DPS Commission has budgeted seventy thousand dollars for a crack and joint sealing in our current road maintenance budget. Road selection has been based, I'm sorry, road selection will be based upon its condition. And I believe if I recall correctly, this down here, after the rains company, I'm not gonna read all that. I mean, we have seventy thousand budgeted, but we're like at fifty six thousand dollars if we retain the same contract. Is that correct? Just somewhere in that time or somewhere in that, uh, ballpark?
We would spend up to the seventy thousand dollars that we
Up to, but I think it was according to the contract, it was fifty, let me find.
Yeah, I think, so the unit pricing would apply. The, probably the, the first time we bid this in twenty twenty three, it was, um, we had fifty six thousand dollars probably available at that point in time, but we have seventy thousand we put in the budget for this year.
So, but we're still going based on older pricing for
Unit price, yep.
Yeah, correct. All right. I see now fifty six hundred, fifty six thousand one twenty five is what it was in twenty three. That's what it was.
Sounds about right, yep. Okay, any discussion?
I'd like to add a comment. Noticed that this was a, I'm gonna call it a group purchase. We were able to get a better value because we competed, cooperated with Allen Park and Trenton and other communities. That's a good thing for the future if it's possible in other areas. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, it allows us to leverage quantities to get better pricing, but also allows us to spread out the cost of bidding. So we can spread the cost to bid the project across the communities that are participating as well, so it works well for all.
Actually, more than just a savings on the volume purchase of goods, I mean, whatever they are that make it work. If the equipment has to be assembled, if it's here and it's only over to Trenton to move at that distance as opposed to something else, there's a savings in that ways too and payroll for that to happen.
Yes, sir. Okay, anybody else?
So while I'm in alignment, um, I just, I'm curious, I have a question because not long ago, we, um, we had a similar situation with Campo Brothers, um, on another DPS, um, action item that was lengthening their, um, their contract, um, which came very, um, heavily, uh, um, endorsed by our DPS Commission and our DPS manager and, um, it was voted down. It was extended for a year just to get us by, but the extension of, I believe it was five years? Three, three additional years? Um, that got voted, uh, down and I'm just curious, what, what would this be? How is this any different from that?
Um, it is similar. It's an extension of a contract at fixed prices from a couple of years prior. Um, I guess it, it could be different in that it's a one-year extension for a, for a set project versus a three-year extension. I did want to make sure that the engineer provided you information about why it made sense for, for you to approve this. Uh, so that's why you have that letter dated September second. Um, uh, and that indicates all the benefits to, to going this route as well as comment on, you know, what the market has done since two thousand three as far as, two thousand twenty three as far as pricing goes and, and why it makes sense. And also the fact that the other municipalities that are participating or had participated in the past are gonna participate with extension as well, so. Um, I would assume that if other communities are okay with it, it makes, it may be a little bit more comfortable that we should be okay with it as well, so.
Now, is that a difference from this one as opposed to the Campo Brothers? I mean, this is not, that Campo Brothers, I know which one you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
That was for Groseal. This is a community type project. I mean, what, I just, multi-community type project, right? For the Allen Park or the people
Correct, yes. So this, this contractor will receive work from, from multiple communities. Um, the Campo Brothers contract, it, it was just a contract between Groseal Township and, uh, Campo Brothers.
But it came equally endorsed by yourself and your commission and I'm not against this. I'm going to vote in favor of it. I guess my concern is I just am not understanding the inconsistency and I think that's not necessarily a question for you. I guess I'm just, I don't understand why, you know, um, what the big difference is and I just wanted to try to, I guess I'm just putting it out there. I probably am not gonna get an answer to it. I'm just explaining my confusion on why this is one thing and the other was something else.
I'm struggling with it too. I think the other one should have gone through. Um, I think it was great that they weren't going to increase the costs and that you were really happy with their work. So I think I struggle with, first of all, um, our commissions and our committees, we need to have confidence in them. And when they tell us it's a great deal and that the vendor is doing great work, it should go through. And so then when we see that one didn't go through and, and then this one will go through, we just take issue with that. Let's be consistent in how we're handling these.
Well, I think the detractor from the last one was, is not here tonight, so.
Exactly.
But with, with all that said, and I respect both, both of you were saying, this is for a year extension as well, right? This is for the twenty twenty five season. This isn't like a three or four-year contract. Am I correct? Am I, am I reading this?
This is just for this construction.
And so we extended Campo Brothers one year. We extended this one year, correct?
Extended Campo Brothers three years instead of five.
It was one year.
No, it was one year.
One year.
Wanted to give it to us longer, right?
There's one year, we extend this one year.
You're right.
But I, but I think it's the part that this is going through with no questions asked. We have that confidence in the committee that we didn't have earlier. And I just want to be consistent with these because when we pass up a good deal, we hurt the township.
I think the consistency here, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go ahead and finish.
No, you're, you're fine.
I think the consistency here is that we extended it for one year. That's the consistency. I mean, or maybe I'm wrong.
I can tell you the differences. You're giving very thoughtful answers and I appreciate that. You are, you are sitting here and you are comparing two agreements and trying to say what makes sense and I appreciate, um, the method that you take. I don't know that that was there on Campo with other people. But I do appreciate how thoughtful you are being and really trying to do the right thing and.
Okay.
I think, uh, I think, I appreciate everyone's statements. I think we should focus on this particular action item for now.
Correct.
So.
You think so, Jameson?
I do.
I'd like to continue for a little bit if you don't mind.
Can I hit him first?
Sure. Yeah, all right, Bill, I'll give you a few minutes. Cause we're, we're off track right now, so.
Talking about trying to achieve consistency. What we're asking for is something that would read the same with, with one unit of government, one organization here and another one for another with, with different circumstances. There's certain goals in purchasing that are always the same. You'd like to get a good value. But the difference is what is a good value? I mean, it, it varies according to what's going on and as a result of that, the way these things end up in their final resolution for a recommendation will have a, a variable to them. Our job, as I see it, is to understand that we're looking for something that has been made public and we get a good public response. If we always deal with good old whoever Joe is and he could be giving us a good deal, we don't get new information from other people that might be helpful. We don't necessarily always get the most competitive bid. There's certain values to these other procedures that help the public interest where to uphold. And I think we have to keep those general principles in mind with whatever we're working with here.
Yep, value and quality of services.
Okay, any further discussion on extending this, uh, crack ceiling contract? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so action item number three. I move to approve expenditure known as nine slash twelve twenty twenty five invoice from Wayne County for a FOIA request from the Groseal Township Treasurer for twenty five dollars to be paid to the Wayne County Treasurer.
Second.
Okay, um, so Margaret, you mind if I just give a quick, uh, once over the world and then you probably want to talk about it, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, the Groseal Township Treasurer, who is not here to articulate the purpose of his actions, um, did a FOIA with Wayne County, uh, regarding the Dallas property. That FOIA and the actions taken with Wayne County were not taken by this body, but by the treasurer as an individual. Um, so there is some question as to whether this should be paid by the taxpayers. It is only twenty five dollars, um, but as fiduciaries, we're supposed to, we're supposed to watch all, all the dimes and nickels. So that's what it is. Um, Margaret, do you want to give the history or any further?
So I went, I've been going through the check registers, um, for the last, I know we should, in particular, this particular item, I noticed it in the check register. It didn't make sense to me because in my opinion, there is nothing that we needed to FOIA as a township from Wayne County with respect to, um, foreclosures. So while the amount is nominal, from a fiduciary point of view, I have concerns that a singular board member would choose to request something that is not in agreement by all board members, no matter what the payment might be, however nominal it may be, um, put through, uh, for payment. And that's why I wanted it removed. I don't know the reason it was put in there. To Mark's point, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. Um, I think we should get an understanding of why this was done. But for me, the very bottom line is it should not have been done, um, without some sort of discussion with other board members on the reasoning behind it. So I just don't feel that it's an appropriate payment to be made at this time.
Yeah, and to, I guess, concur with you, Margaret, I think it's, I think it's a little bit peculiar for one echelon of government to FOIA a higher echelon of government.
Yes.
Right? So if me, Jameson Jaeger, I want to FOIA the state to find out, I don't know, how many Ford trucks they have this month, right? That's fine, but it's not Groseal Township's problem.
Correct.
You know, so I, I think it is a, a bit of peculiar practice. Uh, I don't want to belabor the point, but I don't think we should just approve it. I think we need to hear, I think we need to hear why.
I have comments as well.
Well.
Okay.
Did you want to go ahead, Mark?
No, no, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
No, no, it's fine, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm probably more concerned about this because first of all, as a board, we take action with board votes, right? So we can't have an individual that goes off, especially the treasurer that says, cut it, Chuck. Um, what I was told and, and he can tell me next time if it's wrong, was that he was FOIAing information on the house that we bought that was foreclosed upon. That's getting dangerous. That's, um, calling for litigation and some other problems for the township, even though I don't think there's any cause of action. I also have been saying from meeting to meeting that I want more restrictions around when those checks are caught, cut, which is what we talked about earlier. There was one that was cut and I won't even go into details right now, but I was furious when I found out that it was cut and who it was made payable to. It was inappropriate in my mind. And so, um, but I've also heard comments that he was asking neighbors and, and different things and we need to act as a board and when we take votes, whether we agree with the majority or not, that's what rules, right? And so there has been, um, a history of behaviors that truly concern me.
All right, Mark?
Is it too late for me to ask for this thing to be tabled? I still think, we, we all know this is about our treasurer, Kevin Flavon. He made a certain, uh, uh, request. I still think he should be here to explain his point of view. We've all made requests of certain managers or whatever the case may be, or maybe had certain things reviewed. We've all incurred some type of cost, whether it be legal review or whatever. I'm not saying, I, I'm not for or against at this point. I just think that we should have the entire, uh, for lack of a better word, story here. So I believe the person who made this particular motion to move forward to get this FOIA should be here to explain their position as to why they did what they did. That's all I'm saying.
Mark, the only thing is administratively, so we just said yes, and I mean, help me work through this, but we just said yes that, uh, Kevin and Jameson could sign checks.
Yeah.
Right? So we kind of got that thing like if they went and signed that check, it won't come back to the board. So how do we work through that part of it?
Well, I think if you guys want to talk to the treasurer about this, we should table it.
I, I would like to table it and talk to the treasurer. That's what I would like.
I mean, he could always bring it up as a, he could put it in the check register again.
Okay.
Right? Um, but if you want to discuss it as a board, right, and probably a full board of all seven.
Yes.
It should be tabled. If we deny it tonight, it's a dead issue.
Before we table it, I'd like to throw in one other point here. In terms of what we think, I think we can commend ourselves for the fact that we care and we're trying to do the best that we can for this community. But I can also build a case with that same sincerity that what we think isn't what really matters. What matters is what the policies and procedures that law that are defined for the way a treasurer should act should be known and understood. It should also be the same for what we do as a board with these things. I'm talking about trying to define in an abstract way. I'm talking about, we need to define the lens through which we view this circumstance. If he's doing his job, whether we like it or not, we have to support it. I don't think he got his ideas from nowhere. That's the struck is the person who does that. There's a reason it's worth tabling to listen to it again.
I just want to be clear though, that nobody should be directing Teresa or anybody else to cut checks when the board didn't approve it. And from what I understand is, I, I just, and maybe he can help us with the process because I want to know if he's reviewing the checks, if he's signing the checks and if he's doing it after we approve them at a board meeting. And so, um, cause I'm hearing some crazy stuff and so, you know, maybe it is good that he explained himself, but what I don't want is that check to be signed because of what I heard from it, a lot of bells and whistles are going off because I don't care about the twenty five dollars. I'll open my wallet and get twenty five dollars. It's what could come as a result of the path that he's taking.
Yeah, the concern is, I, I mean, and I'll just, I'll put it in frank terms. The concern is that this could be a personal expense.
Personal expense in the path he's taken is dangerous.
So really quick to, to Bill's point, I pulled policy and procedure. So I'm gonna read just the simplest of them all. Elected official expense reimbursement, members of the township board may be reimbursed for reasonable expenses actually incurred on behalf of the township. So that sentence alone, this would be a reasonable expense, but the difference is it's not on behalf of the township. Okay, but I'm in alignment with Mark. I don't disagree with what you've said. I think it's very reasonable. Um, it makes sense to, um, get a response on understanding this better. At the same time, to Mickey's point, I do not want to see this, um, approved. So. So however, we need to do that to remove it from the check register for now?
Well, it's removed because it's an action item. So I am, I am happy to amend my motion to table action item number three. And then all in, if, if we vote, right, and you vote in favor, you're voting in favor of tabling, not approving. Meaning the invoice won't be paid and it will be an action item on the next meeting.
Yes, I agree.
So.
Okay, but it won't be paid. You won't be saying anything. Okay.
Nope. Because it's not approved.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Action item number three is tabled. And that brings us to my report. So, uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee met, uh, last week. I got your email, Margaret, about, um, the police commission's work. And I like it. So we are, um, working on e-bike ordinances that are, uh, essentially understandable, enforceable, and who, which solve our safety concerns, right? So, um, BPAC's still trying to, uh, still trying to work on that. We've put together a working group. I think the individuals we have on it now as a team, um, are pretty strong. So hopefully we can help the, uh, the police commission move forward with that in a rapid way, because I know we all need a solution to this soon, right? Hopefully we'll see a lot less e-bike traffic this winter. Hopefully we won't see like e-skis or e-snowmobiles or anything running up and down the trails. But, uh, and the, uh, rec commission meeting was briefed this month. I think, I don't think we had a single action item actually, but we did discuss the basket. So people moving to Groseal receive a welcome basket from recreation, which is a pretty cool and unique thing to do. Unfortunately, it's hard to tell who's moving to Groseal and who's moving around Groseal. Uh, so we're trying to refine the process a little bit so that we can make sure it's actual newcomers or returning, returning people and not just me moving up the block into a different house or something like that. Uh, but that's what rec's working on right now. As well as, uh, was it bike, walk and bike to school day, which is coming up on October eighth. So, and that concludes my report. And over to you for the treasurer's report, Teresa.
Okay. For the month of August, Groseal Township had a total of twenty-two million, fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents invested in various accounts. These accounts generated interest income of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents with an average interest rate of three point one percent. Further details of this investment information are available online at the treasurer's website at groseal.com. Groseal summer property taxes were due on September fifteenth. Beginning September sixteenth, a one percent per calendar month penalty has been added to any unpaid summer tax balances. Summer taxes can still be paid at, to Groseal Township until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. After that date, all unpaid taxes, summer and winter, become delinquent and then must be paid directly to Wayne County with further penalty. To date, we have collected ninety-four point seven percent of the twenty-twenty-five summer tax rule. Distribution of the schooling county taxes have been made timely. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. And then trustees reports, Mrs. Bartlett.
Uh, for open space, we're working on closing out some of those encroachments. Um, I got tied up at work, so I didn't get to go see the properties last week. So I'll try and go this week and see if we can close those five out. Um, a couple of them just have some minor things left, so that's good news. Might also consider planting some ripe grass and native flower seed or something to kind of restore. So their next meeting is October seventh. For the fire commission, um, we had a lot of conversation about the generator that we need for the, the public safety building. I can't say it enough. We need the generator. We shouldn't even be fooling with this. I don't want it to be a political issue. If somebody has a heart attack or there's a fire, I want to make sure we can get to people in a timely manner and do what we have to do. And so that'll be coming up on one of our next agendas for a vote. The nice thing is we had our first, uh, pending ceremony at the fire commission for, um, team members that completed their eighteen months of training and are no longer probationary. So congratulations to them and we'll look forward to doing that again for our next group that ends up completing the training. They are having an open house October fifth from noon to four. That's really fun when you bring your kids to. They love seeing all the fire trucks and equipment. Um, our next meeting is October ninth. For the Groseal Nation and Land Conservancy on October second, the Detroit River Public Advisory Council is meeting there with them at the John C. Jackson Resource Center. I'm at six thirty at eight eight oh one McComb Street. And that's it.
Okay. And you know, I was thinking as you were talking about, um, open space and all that, frag-mitey.
We don't like it.
Yeah, it's an invasive species.
Right.
Is there some bulletin somewhere about what the heck to do about them? Because they're, they're everywhere and they're huge.
Well, when I was still in the conservancy, they were working on it down by me past, um, Bridge Road and trying different things to see what works. And then it was my understanding that once they saw if what they were doing worked, then they're going to look to expand it more.
Cool.
Yeah. I don't know if they have anything on their site, but I do know that they've been working for that.
It's practically a traffic hazard at this point. Like it's crazy.
Yeah. It's ridiculous how fast it grows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Hey, are you, for Joe, are you going to talk about, um, Meridian?
The construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. All right. Then I'm all set.
All right. Ms. Shelton?
So, um, I want to make sure I, I thank Wayne County for their support during, um, their busy construction season. I know that the construction on Meridian, that Millenfield was an inconvenience for a lot of people, but now we have a nice, smooth Meridian. We, I've been in contact with Warren Evans office. They have been extremely receptive and collaborative, um, in these instances. And I'm just, uh, really pleased with how we've been moving the needle with Wayne County and making a difference for residents. And I hope everybody, you know, recognizes that, um, you know, they have put in a lot of effort. I know that their construction team, um, wasn't always treated the best as they could have been. And I, I think we can do better next time on that one with respect to, you know, people and how they drive around. These construction guys, they, they put their life into their hands. It's no different than a police officer directing traffic. It's very similar when you have three thousand plus pound vehicles driving by you. So, but I, I'm really pleased. And I want to point out again, there's questions. That was not paid for out of our millish dollars. That was paid for by Wayne County. Another item to talk about is our second newsletter that will be coming out on October first. Um, I'd like to really strongly encourage residents and board members for that matter, to sign up for the newsletter. It's actually kind of interesting. It's got a lot of good info in it. Residents had expressed, uh, a, a big interest in better communication from the township and myself and Mr. Freel are working hard on that with the, uh, the e-newsletter. And one more item is the new light at Park Lane and Church, uh, by the school there. I know that's, you know, you have to, uh, kind of train yourself to not be on autopilot like you once were. Pay attention to the fact that there's a light there now, um, and it's right by school. It's easy to do, so I'm not saying it's not. It's, we all drive on autopilot sometimes and, uh, that's one that you just have to kind of get, um, you gotta, you gotta get used to it because it's, it's for the kids. And also keep in mind, uh, buses. When that stop sign is out for the buses, that means you actually have to stop. That means kids are getting off the bus. They're going around and they're crossing. That is extremely important, and I think we all need to keep that in mind. That's critical. And, um, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Well, I said on the zoning board of appeals, we do have a meeting, uh, tomorrow. We have a closed session starting at six. And then our general meeting starts at seven PM. Now that time has been changed for those who do not recall from the last meeting or are unaware. We'll be going over three different appeals on West River. One in particular is due to the, uh, West Shores Golf Course, uh, planning commissioner approval, which is being appealed by a neighbor. What I would like to ask the public is to either communicate via email or come to our meetings or maybe show up to our study session. I think we have one in a few weeks where we're going over township priorities. Is that correct? Two or three weeks down the road? Okay. Maybe show up to that particular study or, um, yeah, study session as well. I, I, I think in some cases, some ordinances being forced differently upon some than there are others. Uh, what I would like to see is people turn out and kind of express their decisions or, I'm sorry, their, their views on whether we would like strict enforcement or if we're going to relax certain things or maybe change some ordinances. I think it would just be a good thing for the public to show up and start expressing their opinions or maybe writing in their opinions on how they want to see us progress as a board. And whether we need to change some certain things or move forward on different avenues when we enforce our ordinances. That is all I have at this particular moment, but that'll be posted. That study session, you said, two weeks from tomorrow?
The first and the ninth.
I think that one's on the, I believe that one's on the eighth.
Eighth.
On the eighth. So if, if folks could keep that in mind and maybe show up and just, and generally come up to our, our podium and tell us how you feel and how, and which kind of a direction you want us to go in.
I will just say in the study session, that is up to the board if you're going to allow public comment or not. A study session does not have public comment.
You know what? I apologize. You're one hundred percent correct. So I guess you can flood my email box or you can show up and we can make a decision on that night that we'll, we have public comment. My apologies. I, and thank you for catching that. I appreciate it.
I mean, enough people show up, we won't have a choice. All right. Uh, thank you, Mark. Mr. Hile?
Thanks. The airport commerce park commission is working diligently as its duties as a Realtor are immense. And on the top of the pile is yet ongoing concern about the, the, the large hangar and its use as an athletic facility. There's no, uh, there's progress being on talking about alternatives. But at the same time, no resolution is, is yet due. We can keep you advised on that as things progress. But they're a student. They're, they're, they're working on what they're, they're needing to do. The planning commission has completed interviews of people as candidates for, for the vacant seat that was created by resignation recently. And a choice has been made. I'm not sure that I can announce that right now. I want to do it properly at the right time. But we had a tremendous, I wouldn't say a tremendous number, but a very gratifying number of people apply and interview. They all interviewed well. And what I liked most about it was how sincere and intelligent and concerned they were. I felt grateful that we'd had that quality of person and that number of people here to, to apply. That pretty well completes my comments about the, my, the commissions, but I'd, I'd like to just briefly touch, uh, on that, that piece of property we purchased for West Road and, uh, Meridian. Meridian's the one that's got my, my concern, uh, and how we're using the funds. Since the last meeting, I, I learned that the lady who lost the house, and I know that Wayne County had something to do with it. She's the daughter of the guy my wife and I bought our house from. And I've also learned that the thought that she had another home to go to, and I have some reasonable idea where that was, is no longer hers either. I also know that she had a brother who basically did himself in. And this lady has been known to have her problems, which has something to do with whatever. Uh, we have to act in accord with what the law is. I'm not saying that what Wayne County would did was improper. Here's a person who's a resident of Groseal. Her heritage, her family has a home, who had a home, and the home's still around. It was built in eighteen ninety-four in the north end of this island. And it'd be my hope that some way we could find a way to reach out and help that person. I don't, I don't know a thing about where she is at and how to get to her. But it's somehow listening to all of this, there's somewhere in my heart this thought that we take care of our own. And I don't know how to accomplish that. But we have people here who have memories that go back forever. I can't tell you how many people come to me and talk with me about how long they've been seeing animals and petting the nose on them. They were bad llamas. And there, there, there's people here that know everything. We have, we have that kind of a love here for one another. And somehow it just rubs a grain somehow. I just needed to share that. Get it off my heart.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Can I just say though, we do need to be careful with personal information because I don't know if she said it's okay to tell her stories.
I don't even know where she's at.
Okay, but we want to be real sensitive because, um, we don't, you know, we don't want to get up here and talk about somebody's.
Well, I stand corrected.
No, I, what you're doing is very loving and caring, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're careful not to
That's right.
Tell somebody's story without their approval. But, but it was very nice. But it was very, very kind of you.
All right, Derek. Two items very quickly. The township will be hosting a vaccine clinic this Friday from nine to one PM, uh, here at Township Hall. Uh, it is open to residents. Uh, it's being put on by Kroger. So, um, if you are interested, uh, bring your prescription insurance card. But it's a, it's a clinic being held here for convenience sake if, uh, residents are interested. So, and those are the various, um, vaccines that they have available. And that's posted, uh, I believe on our website or on our Facebook page as well.
When is it again, Derek?
Uh, it is actually this Friday, uh, September twenty-sixth from nine to one.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. And then last, the township will be hosting, um, a toll bridge, uh, logo design competition. This is also on our website. The, uh, competition will open up, uh, October first and run through January fifteenth. The, with the recent purchase of the toll bridge, the toll bridge commission had interest in, um, putting together a new logo that commemorates the, you know, municipal ownership, the community ownership of the toll bridge. So in order to, to commemorate that, uh, they're looking at modifying the logo, uh, to reference, uh, that change. And what better way than to, uh, have the community participate in that? So, for the rights to the logo designed, um, they're offering two hundred and fifty dollars to the selected, um, logo or the person that develops the selected logo. The instructions on how to submit, uh, will be on our website and Facebook. So feel free to, uh, give us your ideas. Look forward to lots of, uh, participation. So, uh, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I get to go twice. Um, so I think the, uh, the logo design competition is a really cool idea. I don't know which one of you all came up with that, but.
Bridge Commission.
The Bridge Commission came up with it? They did? Awesome. So they're doing, they're doing good work already. I'm glad we got some business folks on there. They know a thing or two about branding, huh? So, um, I just want to talk about Meridian real quick. Uh, like, uh, I think it was Margaret or Mickey said, it was a pretty significant inconvenience. I got a, you know, one day I left the island driving northbound and then I tried to come back. Ended up having to drive southbound and go all the way around the island. And I, I get it. It was frustrating for a minute, right? But it, the road looks great. I'm really happy. I think it's tremendous that Wayne County came out and fixed that road for us because Meridian's a road everybody uses. You know, we can all complain about, you know, whatever, uh, east-west road is in poor shape, but Meridian's the one we're all driving on. So it's, it's great that it's fixed. I did see some crazy stuff though, like people, I saw people driving on the bike trail. I saw people driving northbound in the southbound traffic. So, you know, we, I don't know, maybe we need to communicate. I, we, we had so many signs and everything out. I don't know how better to tell the community what way to drive.
No, people need to behave appropriately to be very fair.
What it is.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, uh, the car on the bike trail was just blowing my mind. If I could have got out of traffic and caught up to them, I would have absolutely lost my mind. But, um, so either way, it's done now. Um, I think that, you know, they, if you, if you notice, the trucks started coming over at like seven AM and the workers were there well after five PM, right? So they really, they really did some great work and I appreciate the hard work they did. So, um, drove down, uh, Elba the other day. That's looking like it's nearly complete, if not completed now.
Should be completed tomorrow.
Okay. All right. It was ninety-five percent done, uh, yesterday or the day before. So, um, that project looks great. And then, uh, then they'll be on to the South Point Grow Road Bike Trail Repair. So I think we're, I mean, we have some construction. It's a pain, but I think, you know, improving these infrastructure Um, so I think we're, I mean, we have some construction, it's a pain, but I think, you know, improving these infrastructure components um, in a, uh, scheduled and deliberate way is, is how we keep them, you know, lasting a long time and, and useful to all the residents, so.
The one from Elba Island got a ride in a little boat, though, so that it could get to work, that was on social media, I thought that was cute, yeah.
Yeah, that was unique, but, uh, you know, special to our island, you know, any island for that matter, yeah.
And then one woman, I didn't know her, but she put, posted on, um, Facebook how grateful she was for Meridian, because it is a nice, smooth ride now, it really is.
It is.
Isn't it nice?
Do you have anything to add about the construction, Derek, is there anything?
No, just thanks to the county, I was on a call today with them, uh, you know, thanks for, for keeping it on their list and staying to their promises. And I know it was a challenge dealing with the bridge, even, um, even with them waiting a year or two until some repairs were done over there, but, uh, um, you know, we're, we're, we're critical when we want things done, but we also got to give credit for when things are accomplished, and, and I, I've heard that from everybody tonight. And, uh, hopefully that it, it filters back to the county that we're appreciative and thank them for their work.
I mean, we need to send them a, maybe we could do a resolution of gratefulness or something.
That's a good idea.
That is a good idea.
Yeah, send us some Groseal welcome baskets, right?
Oh, God.
We can invite them to the next Township Board Social, so, I'm just kidding, we don't have a Township Board Social. Alright, uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, and go Lions.